Good evening, everybody. I apologize for being a minute tardy. This is the regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee, June 2nd, 7:00 PM. Our agenda tonight is visitors, followed by approval of minutes. We have some executive session minutes to review, approve, and vote to release, and then some regular meeting minutes. We have two teaching and learning highlights tonight. The first with Mr. Ralph DeBona, Construction Career Day Signature Project, and the rest -- the second one with Mr. Gill, Ms. Hathaway, is some great recognition for the Ahern Drama Club. We then have two policies, first reading of two policies. One deals with the evaluation of the superintendent, the second deals with bullying prevention. We'll then move to an end-of-year update on our three-year strategic plan, a review of the superintendent evaluation process, and an acceptance of a donation from a very exciting day last week with the Kraft Charitable Foundation, and then we'll have other matters. So, we'll start with any visitors that wish to be recognized. Mr. DeBona looks like he's ready to go, doesn't he?
He's always ready to go.
Seeing no visitors, we'll move to our minutes. Janet, thanks for preparing these. The first minutes are the March 17th executive session meeting minutes.
Bruce, I just had one change. It says "Mr. Bellinger seconded," so just in case there's any confusion, I think it should be Ms. Bellinger. Other than that, I have no changes.
I don't recall Mr. Bellinger being here.
No, nor do I.
Everybody else had a chance to review the minutes? I'll take a motion to approve the executive session minutes from March 17th.
I'll second.
Actually, I need someone to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I thought you --
I'll make it too, but no. You want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion if Abby can second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
As amended.
Now, a motion to release those minutes?
We have a motion to release the minutes as amended for the executive session on March 17th, 2014.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next set of minutes are the April 7th executive session meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Motion to release?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. April 28th executive session meeting minutes.
Motion to accept as written unless there's any discussion, the minutes of April 28th, 2014's executive session.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A motion to release these minutes from April 28th?
I'll second.
Double seconded? Awesome.
Ms. Lloyd, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So that gets us caught up on a number of our executive session meetings. I think we have one more that we still are working on.
Yes.
If I remember right.
Yes.
Okay. So we're on to the regular meeting minutes of May 21st.
Make a motion to accept.
Thanks, Katie.
I'll second.
I just had one change I wanted to make, just one word, but on the last page when we returned from our executive session with a new offer for the superintendent for a three-year contract, and as worded, the minutes say that the motion was to accept the superintendent's contract as presented. I think this is a nit, but I'd just like to suggest we change the word "accept" to "approve."
Agreed.
Sure.
So...
So do we motion, as Mr. Gardner said, to amend the minutes of May 21st on the last page from "accept to agreed"?
Accept to approve.
Accept to approve.
We voted to approve the new superintendent's contract. Thank you, Steve. That's a motion? And a second? Anyone?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Joe, we have a question.
Joe! Thank you.
So, are you guys going to have the February 24th meeting, executive session minutes?
We are at a future meeting.
Why have they not already?
We're doing a little bit of review on those, I think, Joe?
Oh.
That's all. But yes, thank you. You're absolutely right. Okay. Teaching and learning highlights. Ms. Spinelli.
Yes. As you know, it's our norm to have one per evening, but we are skidding close to the end of the school year, and so many of our kids are achieving some really unique and wonderful things, so we didn't want to be remiss and not recognize each thing. So we've got one for the meeting on the 16th, but I doubled up tonight because these two are something that we didn't want to miss. So we're going to start with Ms. DeBona, and as Foxborough High School students, the Construction Career Day Signature Project, and this is the second year in a row that they have won, so they have various things to show you, and I'll turn it over to Ms. DeBona to introduce the kids and talk about.
Thank you. And thank you for giving us the time to present this project. Students worked hard on this, and they deserve to win. Ellen Pillsbury does a great job every year organizing the Construction Career Day field trip, and we get involved in the signature project that the Construction Career Day people want to see all schools in the state get involved with. And this year's task was a fictitious scenario where Boston won the 2024 Summer Olympic Games, and they wanted us to design a gateway to the Olympic Village. And because Boston is such a small city, there is no room to house an Olympic Village, so they gave us a set of coordinates out in Charlton, Mass., that they wanted us to construct a bridge from I-90 going over Route 20 and into -- and design the gateway into the Olympic Village. And that was the task at hand. And as soon as I read the task to the kids, they jumped immediately and said, "Let's do it." And with the competitive nature of my students, I'm blessed to have them, they said, "Let's do it. Let's go far. We're going to win this thing." And I said, "Okay, all right." And I'm going to try to be humble about this, but I don't think being humble is in my nature. We've done this four years, and we've won it three years, and we came in second on our one year. So we messed up one year, and so we were determined to win this again this year. So, I would like to introduce the students. There were 17 in all that participated, and the seniors that couldn't be here tonight because the seniors are just about gone. I just want to recognize their names. Trace Spencer, Patrick Breyon, Zach Smith, Jack Lane, Justin Supanik, and Mitch Timmons. And the guys, let's introduce them. Our project manager, James Pierce, the only senior that came tonight. It's a great change. Mike Riccio, Kyle Will, Chris Marshall, Kevin Rajiani, Harry Madden, Cam Seeley, and Connor McKinnon. And I'm going to turn this all over to you guys, and I want you to explain what's going on.
All right. So let's have the second row pull up so we can see you.
Start.
Okay. Okay.
So when we first got the assignment, the first thing we did was we went on Google Earth to map out the location of the coordinates which they sent us, and we found it was a relatively hilly swampy area. And we immediately went to map out the roadways and the terrain of the location so we could put it in accurately represented to scale in our model.
All right. So after that, after we had everything mapped out, we put a piece of paper over a plank that was 24 by 40, and we drew all the roads using the curved roads. We used a flex ruler, and we put them in. Everything is to scale, all the roads, all the signs, all the bridges, the ramps, everything's to scale. The ramps have a 4% increase, so we had to use the ruler to get the length and the height to make sure we maintained a 4%. We used our 3D printer to make this Bay Path College and these entrances, as well as the dome where the athletes would be training.
And then using the curve ruler, we were able to cut out the ramps using wood, and then using West Point Bridge Design software, we were able to design the bridge and then make it out of wood. And then same thing for the ramp going down into the parking lot.
The parking lot? What we did was we took measurements from the parking lot outside for the spaces. They were 10 by 20, and then we just drew everything in. We put in lights. We have working lights over here and here that would light up the flags. We have all the flags from the nations that competed in the Sochi Olympics in 2014.
Can we talk a little bit, having seen it up close? The lights are amazing, and the ramps are amazing, but the flags were fascinating.
Yeah. So for the flags, what we did was we took images off Google, and we put them onto Microsoft Word, and we took this thing called Transfer Paper, and we printed out all the flags onto that, and you put the paper onto cloth. We used an old t-shirt, and then you iron it on. It's kind of like any print you want to put on a t-shirt for, like a sport or anything. Yeah. So everything bends, and it's like a real flag.
Steve?
Part of these projects that is naturally fantastic is the presentation skills that go along with it, and so far, I think, the team has been terrific.
Thank you very much.
If any of you in the back row, you look like a choir. I'm sorry. Please don't start singing. But if any of you could just sort of say what part you all had in it, or what collaborative experience that you all had that you liked, I'd love to hear how you worked as a team and who the specialists were. Just real briefly, but, you know, make Mom and Dad proud at home.
I guess. So what I did was I created the signage on the roads. If you look closely, you'll see a bunch of tiny, to scale, signs that you'd see on the highway, like speed limit signs, yield, do not enter, all of that sort of stuff. And what I did was I went onto Microsoft Word, and while for some of the signs, I'd need to actually get images from Google, most of them I just used the simple insert shape and text, and just sort of played around with it until I got the shapes and stuff right.
Those are impressive. Just like the ones on the Mass Pike, obviously. It really -- that was...
Basically, what I did is I put all the statistics we needed for this project into that binder over there, so my job was pretty easy.
But somebody had to.
Well, thorough. Well, thank you.
Some may not agree that that's easy.
That's a lot of attention to detail, and that's oftentimes difficult.
I did all the 2D and 3D imaging, so in the binder as well. I have a 2D and 3D layout of the project right here with different, you know, angles of the highways and the bridge.
Thank you.
I worked on the documentation with Kevin, so we started, we did all the typing and stuff like that, and I don't know if he thought it was easy, but I thought it was pretty hard. We worked on it for like two weeks and even over April vacation, so we did actually a real amount of work on that.
That was a sarcastic easy, by the way.
Clearly, we get that. Yeah, that's not hard, that's not easy at all.
So I worked on designing the dome and the Olympic Village background to that. I also worked on the parking lots, making the lines, painting them white, the entrances to security and all that, making sure the village looked good, so, yeah.
One thing I'd also like to add is the trees we got from Mr. Kazer's Flames of War Club. He donated those. He donated them to us last year, too, so he's helped out a lot. They worked really well with our scale and just our terrain, so I'd like to say thank you to him.
Great. Can you talk about, one of the things that has really impressed me over the last couple of years is the different classes that all work on the same project, because it appears like you've run one class, and you all create this project, but that isn't so. Because can you talk about the different courses that you're enrolled in that all contribute to this? Because that's impressive teamwork across classes.
Yeah. So all of us, I'm pretty sure, are, we share some classes, but we're in three different classes mostly. So I'm in Intro CAD and Advanced CAD. So the Advanced CAD is the 3D printer, that's all that, the 3D models. The Intro class, there weren't too many people from that class that worked on this, but the people that did helped laying down the lines and everything like that. And the last class is the Architecture class, which did, I mean, a ton of work on this project. So they had to, Chris is in that class, he did the 3D view of it in Visionaire, which is our architectural design software. So he has the whole layout of this in a 2D and 3D plan.
So where does this rank, guys, in terms of work you've done at Foxborough High? Is this something you're pretty proud of?
I'd say this is one of the things I'm most proud of for Foxborough.
And you guys have a couple other props up there you're holding. What have you got up there?
Yep. So this is our first-place award that we got this year, and that is a check for $500.
Made out to?
Made out to Foxborough High School.
Mr. DeBona, spend it already?
Not yet. I tried to last year, and they were like...
Yeah.
Actually, do we have to, where does that go? Do we have to accept it? Maybe they should just, I didn't even think of that.
Take a motion to accept that donation?
Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was quick. Put it in the bank.
I think we really should give them a round of applause.
Yeah.
Can I throw in one more, Mr. DeBona? Because I'm going to follow your lead and not be humble on your behalf, your students. But the types of high schools that enter this competition, and one of the surprises, I know from speaking to some of the students, was that the expectation of people who run Construction Career Day is that a lot of the voc tech schools do this kind of work a little bit more than we do. So can you talk a little bit about that? Don't be humble. It's not the time.
So the majority of the schools that enter this competition are vocational tech schools, but it seems like every year, we kind of blow them out of the water, except for one year. But hopefully, even after I'm gone, everybody will keep that tradition up, first place. I mean, we just, we put in 110%. Everybody really does every day. We all try our hardest, so...
That's pretty significant. I just had to get that in there.
How was the coach? I love your coach.
Oh, yeah. We all love our coach.
He brought you together.
He did bring us together. He's a very good teacher, and he helped a lot on this project.
Making me blush.
Well, Ralph and the students helped out to a company here in town a year or so ago, and a nonprofit charitable organization designed a backyard setup, an outside grove, and we came to them and treated the students as if it was a professional task, and with Ralph's enthusiasm and guidance, the students came up with a terrific drawing and schematic that we actually used and have since executed, and it's live out behind the YMCA, actually, here in town, the family grove. So the whole department here is just versatile and excellent.
Well, thank you for your kind words. I just want to thank Kelly Akasha and her staff. They helped with the backdrop and all the artwork that they did. James already mentioned Todd supplied the trees, and Ellen Pillsbury, and of course, these guys did a great job.
Very impressive.
I'm Mr. Richard.
Very proud.
And the support that you continue to give to the department, because we wouldn't be able to do this without all the technology that's available to us.
Can this go like at the library or something for the town to see, under, you know, glass or plexi of some kind?
Well, we've got four of these that we'd like to get under plexiglass, but we're running out of space in the building. I was thinking of maybe hanging them from a raft or something. I don't know. It could go anywhere.
Well, it's an accomplishment that, you know, the town should see, you know, be on TV.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Maybe they have a little installation of the last four projects at the library. Might be, we should, we'll find out.
I owe them a book, though. Don't mention my name.
Okay. There you go.
Hey, great job, guys.
Excellent.
I actually have one question.
Sure.
How many other schools competed in this competition?
Three others? Yeah. Yeah, this year, there were three. I mean, it seems to be going down every year. I think, what was it, the first year, there were 20?
Over 20.
Over 20? Yep.
Well, I hear Foxborough's coming, so they just...
Yeah, exactly.
I think, though, the specs have been getting really challenging.
They have, yeah.
I remember last year was that water feature we talked about that was challenging. So, you know, I just commend you that no matter how challenging it looks, you get it done and come out on top.
Great job, guys. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Awesome job. All right. That's awesome. That's terrific.
So impressive.
And then we're getting a nice shot on TV.
Look how wonderful they are. You can stay at school committee if you are interested, boys, but you don't have to. So if you want to exit, you may, don't feel, don't feel worried about making an exit if you'd like to. Most guests do.
Do exit.
Do. I always worry, like, they sit, and they'll be here for three hours.
That's fascinating work.
It is, isn't it?
I mean, that's amazing.
It's the most real, real work challenge, I think, kids have.
Eyes are fog. And I mean, to scale. I mean, every detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Stay if you will, go if you will, don't worry about it. So as we transition to the next group, this is another award-winning group. Our first-ever Ahern Drama Club entry into the middle school drama competition won the silver medal. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kate Hathaway. Kate Hathaway is a teacher at the middle school, and she and Tom Gill are the advisors for the Ahern Drama Club, and I'm just going to turn it right over to you, Kate.
All right. Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for having us in today. We had quite a cast of 15, and we do soccer tournaments and lacrosse and all kinds of things. We're down to our two star players, so I apologize for the lack of appearance tonight. We embarked on this endeavor for the first time this year. I've been involved with the drama club at the Ahern, and this is my second year, the end of my second year. And I had gone to Mrs. Abrams at the beginning of this and said, "You know what? There's something I'd really like to do." I always knew about the Massachusetts High School Drama Festival, but I had just recently learned about the Middle School Drama Festival. And I did a little investigating, found out that the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild is very focused on education through theater, and their goal is to make theater not just something that's entertaining, but also something that's very educational as well, so that students, as well as audience, can learn through theater. And their role is to allow students and the audience to learn about life, to learn about life situations, how to deal with characters that might be a little different than you. So I was very excited to be able to embark on this. Now, going into it, this was our first time involved in the Massachusetts Middle School Drama Festival, and I thought, "I just wanted to leave there with my dignity intact." And I was quite pleased that in an arena of nine schools, we were able to earn a silver --
How many?
Nine. Nine on that day. They had 38 schools total, but each day, they take separately, and on our day, there were nine schools competing, and we walked away with a silver medal, which I thought was quite impressive for our first time out. Just to give you a small background on me, because I know I'm kind of a new player in this arena, I've been with the Ahern for six years, but I've managed to kind of fly under the radar a little bit, which is a role I like as a director, let the kids be out front, and, you know, I can kind of fly behind the scenes. But I've been involved in theater since I was their age. I started in 7th grade, where my English teacher created a drama department at the school that I was at. So I think it's kind of fortuitous that I became an English teacher myself, 7th grade, and started the drama club here as well. I've been involved in theater since I was their age, went on and worked in theater in high school, I've done musicals, I've done straight plays, comedies, tragedies. I've got a bachelor's degree in journalism at Arizona State University, but I minored in theater. And even though my degree was in journalism, I think I spent more time on the stage than I did in the newsroom, because that was where my passion really was. And I was able to do some work outside of college as well, in community theater in Phoenix, and then a little bit of community theater in Los Angeles as well. My claim to fame was that I was in a play at the Pasadena Playhouse once upon a time, which was really quite exciting for me. But then, you know, things get in the way. I got married, had a kid. She's back there somewhere. My support, my biggest cheerleader. And I was so excited, though, to land at the Ahern and be able to get back into theater in a venue that I like. So I love being able to direct. I love making sure that the kids are having an amazing time on stage and enjoying themselves while learning something about themselves, about the world, about theater, and all of that. So aside from winning our silver medal, which we are very proud of, we also were singled out for two All-Star awards. And one was to Katie Burke, who was our lead as Darcy in Darcy Cinematic Life, and the other was for Jacob Parkman, who was also a lead, playing Chad in Darcy Cinematic Life. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the other students, because we actually had students from 5th grade right on up to 8th being involved. Our two 5th graders were Shannon Egan and Nicole Corkery. Our 6th graders were, first of all, Jacob Parkman, Danny Isaza, James Kazer, and Evan O'Brien. We had 7th graders Zahar Bootwala, Azariah McDaniel, Caitlin Leary, Julia Muse, and who am I missing? I think I'm missing somebody there. I'll come back to her. And our 8th grader, CJ Jean Grande, Sarah Cousinow, Katie Burke, and our crew, which was Morgan O'Leary. Our two guys that were on sound, Dan Egan and Jackson Stone, and Melody Chank was also our stage crew. So we had a very small crew, a medium to small cast, and we pulled off an amazing thing here. So I would like to turn it over to Katie and Jacob, who would like to say a few words for you as well.
I'd like to thank you all once more time for letting us speak tonight. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gill and Ms. Hathaway for being amazing. I think one of the big things about drama and theater is having a lot of confidence, because I think we all have to admit, public speaking is pretty scary. I mean, you're afraid of messing up, you're afraid of saying the wrong thing, the list just goes on. And it's, drama's a little different, because you're not necessarily speaking as you when you're on stage, you're speaking as a different person, a person you're supposed to be pretending to be. But it still requires a lot of willpower to get up on stage and actually do what you're supposed to do, because some of the time, it's either going to be extremely emotional or pretty kind of goofy. Like, I know that both me and most of the crew and cast had to do a lot of kind of wacky things with this play in particular. But I think that drama, I actually just started last fall. I think that my confidence has definitely been boosted in the time that I've been on stage. I mean, I felt I've cared a little less about any negative thoughts or comments that people might have been thinking or saying, just in anyone in general, and I felt even just getting up and presenting a project was easier, which I personally thought was awesome. And one of the things about the festival in particular is you have to get up on stage, you know, do your thing, but at the same time, you're letting other people judge how you do and what you're doing. And like public speaking, that's pretty scary, and you're, because again, you're afraid to mess up. And if that doesn't require a lot of confidence and, I think, moral support from everyone, then I don't know what does. I feel like I can be more how I want to act, and I hope that the rest of the cast and crew feel the same. And I just think that it's been a really positive experience, and I definitely enjoyed this, though I was pretty sick of everyone by the end of it.
You have no public speaking fear in my eyes right now.
It's been wiped clean the past year, I think.
How about you, Jacob?
My name is Jacob Parkman, and I'm a proud 6th grade member of the Ahern Drama Club. So the group of schools there at the competition was incredible, really, because they had plays that were incorporated with their English and history class, and their theater arts are a huge part of their school system. And the Ahern Drama Club, we were there just for the first time, and going in it, I wasn't expecting much because of the competition there, and I was just really happy to be there, but, and I was so proud to represent the club, the school, most of all, the town, in earning an All-Star Acting Award. Theater makes me so excited because I can reach out to the audience as the character that I'm being, and it just, it is a safe place for me to be who I want to be in different choices. And it just, it is a safe place for me to be who I want to be in different choices. And I mean, to be given, to be recognized for my, for a talent in that was a very great experience for me. And I'd like to thank Ms. Hathaway, Mr. Gill, Mrs. Abrams, and most of all, the school committee for giving me that opportunity.
Least of all, the school committee.
Least of all, the school committee.
Can you guys tell us a little bit about the play? Because I'm not familiar with the play. What's it a story about?
Our play is a comedy. It follows a few days in the life of a girl named Darcy, who is your typical, actually very intelligent girl, just going through eighth grade. But what she does is she has daydreams, as her mother and teacher call it. But they're not really daydreams. It's sort of like she incorporates little stories or pieces of movies, just anything, into her life, and she's sort of, I totally made this word up, cinematizes them. Don't look for that in the dictionary, it's probably not going to be there. And it follows her as she goes through first, a typical day, it follows her family, and the horrors of a school field trip. And it's got everything in it. It's got mean girls, a crush, she's, in my opinion, she's very relatable. She's your awkward, intelligent, middle school girl. It wasn't very hard to portray her, in all honesty.
Your mother's enjoying that one.
Yeah, she's laughing behind me, isn't she?
You can turn around and look.
Oh, she's embarrassed, okay.
There's a little role reversal.
Tina, go. I had the good fortune to see them perform the Friday night before they competed, and the show was fantastic. You all did very well. Both of you were excellent, and Katie, I look forward to seeing what you're going to do in high school next year. And Jacob, you've got two more years at the Ahearn, so next year, we're expecting to see the gold medal come back here.
No pressure.
The entire cast and crew worked so well together during the course of the performance. There were so much, there was so much stuff on the stage, just that you had to remember and do your placement and the chairs and the props. And it was such a well-coordinated effort, and I really enjoyed it. I sat with your mom, and we thought you guys just did a fabulous job.
I would like to say one thing about that. With the competition, you're given only thirty-five minutes in which to perform.
Forty-five.
So there, forty minutes?
Forty-five.
No, I think it was only forty.
Forty.
Because we were like down to the wire sometimes, forty minutes. And so there really isn't a whole lot of time to change scenery, or to change costumes, or anything like that. You can't have large blackouts, it has to go pretty quick. So we orchestrated movements within the play, so that they could create a quasi-set with each different scene, but it was all taking place on the stage, and it became almost like a dance, it was so well-choreographed from going from one scene to the next.
That's how you felt watching it.
I was so impressed with these kids and how well they were able to pull that off. And after a while, I was able to just sit back and let them go, because they had it down, they knew what they had to do, and they just really kind of worked on it themselves. It was a great team effort on their part.
Yeah, it did take forever. And honestly, I don't, I may have been the main character, but I wouldn't have been able to do anything without everyone else. I would just be walking around the stage and talking, and that is pretty boring, after a while.
I know I wasn't half as poised as you guys are at your age, and so well-spoken, but I did like drama, and I was involved in drama in middle and high school. So I'm just amazed at what you accomplished, but I couldn't go that night, because I had another event, but three people I knew that went Friday night to see you, you included, were texting me, "Oh my goodness, wait till you see, they're going to do so well tomorrow, this piece is amazing." So people on the spot were reaching out to say, unbelievable. So the silver medal, I agree with you, first time out, you're not expecting to win, but good for you.
Great.
Thank you.
I think we should give two rounds of applause. I think the first should be for the two of you for your awards.
Yes.
You guys make us very proud, very proud. And I think the second should be for your award that you won, that you won collectively, Ms. Hathaway and Mr. Gill, their work, and the entire cast and crew. Congratulations. Great job, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing all of you at our shows next year.
Absolutely.
See, this is what it's all about, when kids find something, they're so excited about.
We're expecting you to come.
I'm going to be super fan, don't you wait, don't you worry. That was amazing.
That's called jitty to go, throwing the glove down.
First time out.
I'm surprised with Ms. Lord's acting background and directorial background, and she must have just sat there and awed right there. You didn't say a word, you're just, what can you say, bruh?
She speaks so well for themselves.
You need a good coach. You need to provide the opportunity.
Yes, that's right.
And those are two examples of that, isn't it? Providing the opportunity, two different ends of the spectrum, that's awesome.
Yes.
Yep, nice combination.
And our faculty willing to step out in front and put the time in, so.
But they also were very cognizant of the fact that their production could not have gone anywhere without their crew. So people don't have to be onstage to love theater.
And they work for many, many weeks after school, these kids and their teachers.
Well, and she said, balancing all the sports and everything else they had to do.
Makes me wish I'd seen it.
Too. I had something else that night, but.
I had a conflict also, or I would have gone.
Okay, policies.
Ah.
Policies.
I'll turn it right over to the famous policy subcommittee.
To your right.
Ms. Lord and Ms. Bellinger.
At least infamous.
I'll take famous. So the first policy that we're going to have the first reading of is File CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent. You have in your packet in front of you the current policy and then the draft. And I'll read the draft, and as you can see, the current policy, we're swapping out, the last paragraph is changing to two new paragraphs, which will encompass the new, well, it's sort of new, the two-year-old Massachusetts Education Evaluation, Educator Evaluation System. So it's File CBI, Evaluation of the Superintendent. Through evaluation of the superintendent, the Foxborough School Committee will strive to accomplish the following. One, clarify for the superintendent his/her role in the school system as seen by the Foxborough School Committee. Two, clarify for all Foxborough School Committee members the role of the superintendent in light of his/her job description and the immediate priorities among his/her responsibilities as agreed upon by the Foxborough School Committee and the superintendent. Three, develop harmonious working relationships between the Foxborough School Committee and the superintendent. Four, provide administrative leadership of excellence for the school system. The committee agrees to evaluate the superintendent in writing once during each fiscal year using the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System and the Model System for Educator Evaluation developed, and which may be updated from time to time by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The committee will discuss and review the superintendent's job performance in accordance with the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System with the superintendent once annually in open session. School committee members may contribute to the superintendent's annual evaluation only if they have served on the committee for the majority of the contract year. And the legal references are MGL Chapter 71, Section 38, MGL Chapter 150E, and 603 CMR 35. That's the first reading of that.
Was that the...
Any questions?
Is that language, Tina, that was provided to us, or did you guys have to come up with that?
That is language that we came up with when we were working on the superintendent's new contract, and we incorporated into her contract language to reflect what we are doing with our evaluation of the superintendent, as we will discuss later on in this meeting, actually.
That's right.
And some of it does come from the model contract language for the educators' contract recommended by the department.
That's what we...
So we just wordsmithed it to customize it a little bit more.
Any questions or comments?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, so this will come back for a second reading in a...
In two weeks, and then we can hopefully vote to adopt it.
Right. If there are no further questions next week, no, I mean, at our next meeting, and we feel that it is ready for adoption, you can vote to waive a complete reading again.
Good point. Let's hope for that. All right, the second one is a little bit longer. And this is File JICFB. It is our Policy on Bullying Prevention. And you've been given an edited version that shows where the changes are going to be made. So you can see where it's, the strike-through are things that we are removing. I will read the policy with the edits in it, omitting the language that has been struck through. And anyway, these, before I get started, these changes in general were to reflect changes in the Massachusetts legislation on bullying that are going into effect start of July.
Right, so it's, we're a little bit even.
So we had to...
And...
Is this from the, where did this language come from directly? Did it come from...
It comes from the legislation, which comes through me to the Superintendent's Association, and comes to you through MASC.
Okay, so MASC did provide this?
Yeah, some of it, yes, a lot of the changes. But the two basic changes that have occurred in the last year, because sometimes their changes come one on top of another, this is a policy that they recommended a little tweak every year since its creation, or not. So one of the, one of the things that we're responding to, you can see in the top, is that the bullying policy has to encompass not just students, but it has to apply to staff members as well. So where you see the additional language that says, you know, say, for example, bullying is a repeated use by one or more students or a member of the school staff, et cetera, that's one of the big changes. The recent change is also that, just, and then I'll let Tina do all her readings, that they really, even though we put in what we felt was clear language on what bullying is or could look like, so that we're very, very clear to people, they wanted the exact definition of the Massachusetts law included as well. And then the third recommended change that we are expected to adjust the policy to is that members of certain student groups, such as students with disabilities, students who are gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or questioning, and homeless students may be more vulnerable, that, or questioning, is the recent addition to the law, that those students should be included in the groups of potentially at-risk students. Those are really the three changes that have been recommended to us.
And you revised the bullying plans, the prevention and intervention plan, and so now our policy is aligned with the bullying plan and aligned with the state legislation. Are you sure you don't want to read this?
Maybe you can split it up.
Oh, it's okay, I can...
Yes, if your voice is tired, I will, but I have been on this committee since the inception of my membership on the school committee, so I've had plenty of opportunity to read, and you do it so well.
I just didn't want you to feel left out.
I do not feel left out.
I think this is a senior partner, junior partner.
Getting that feeling.
Power play.
All right, so it's File JICFB, Bullying Prevention.
If your voice is tired, I'll take over though.
Okay. The Foxborough Public Schools is committed to providing all students and school staff a safe, positive, and productive educational environment where students can achieve the highest academic standards. No student shall be subjected to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or cyberbullying. Bullying is the repeated use by one or more students or member of a school staff of a written, verbal, or electronic expression, or a physical act or gesture, or any combination thereof, directed at a target that causes physical or emotional harm to the target or damage to the target's property, places the target in reasonable fear of harm to him/her self, or of damage to his/her property, creates a hostile environment at school for the target, infringes on the rights of the target at school, or materially and substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of a school. Bullying may involve, but is not limited to, one, unwanted teasing, two, threatening, intimidating behavior, three, stalking or cyberstalking, four, cyberbullying, five, physical violence, six, theft or destruction of school or personal property, seven, sexual, religious, or racial harassment, eight, public humiliation, nine, social exclusion, including incitement or coercion, ten, spreading of falsehoods or rumors. Cyberbullying is bullying through the use of technology or electronic devices such as telephones, cell phones, computers, and the internet. It includes, but is not limited to, email, instant messages, text messages, and internet posting. The legal definition of cyberbullying set forth in MGL Chapter 71, Section 370 applies to this policy. Bullying and cyberbullying may occur in and out of school, during and after-school hours, at home, and in locations outside of the home. When bullying and cyberbullying are alleged, the full cooperation and assistance of parents and families are expected. For the purpose of this policy, whenever the term bullying is used, it is to denote either bullying or cyberbullying. Bullying is prohibited on school grounds, on property immediately adjacent to school grounds, at school-sponsored or school-related activities, at functions or programs whether on or off school grounds, at school bus stops, on school buses or other vehicles owned, leased, or used by the school district, or through the use of technology or an electronic device owned, leased, or used by the Foxborough Public Schools. Bullying and cyberbullying are prohibited at a location, activity, function, or program that is not school-related, or through the use of technology or an electronic device that is not owned, leased, or used by the Foxborough School District. And allegations of bullying will be investigated if the act or acts in question create a hostile environment at school for the target, infringe on the rights of the target at school, and/or when it impacts a student's educational experience or affects the school environment. Nothing contained herein shall require the schools to staff any non-related, any non-school-related activities, functions, or programs. The district understands that members of certain student groups, such as students with disabilities, students who are gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or questioning, and homeless students may be more vulnerable to becoming targets of bullying, harassment, or teasing. The district will take specific steps to create a safe, supportive environment for vulnerable populations in the school community, and provide all students with the skills, knowledge, and strategies to prevent or respond to bullying, harassment, or teasing. Prevention and Intervention Plan. The superintendent and/or his/her designee shall oversee the development of a prevention and intervention plan in consultation with all district stakeholders, which may include teachers, school staff, professional support personnel, school volunteers, administrators, community representatives, local law enforcement agencies, students, parents, and guardians, consistent with the requirements of this policy, as well as state and federal laws. The Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be reviewed and updated at least annually. The principal is responsible for the implementation and oversight of the Bullying Prevention and Implementation Plan within his or her school. Reporting. Students who believe that they are a target of bullying, observe an act of bullying, or who have reasonable grounds to believe that these behaviors are taking place, are obligated to report incidents to a member of the school staff. The target shall, however, not be subject to discipline for failing to report bullying. Each school shall have a means for anonymous reporting by students of suspected incidents of bullying. No formal disciplinary action shall be taken solely on the basis of an anonymous report. Any student who knowingly makes a false accusation of bullying shall be subject to disciplinary action. Parents or guardians or members of the community are encouraged to report a suspected incident of bullying as soon as possible. A member of a school staff shall immediately report to the school principal or designee any suspected incident of bullying which a staff member has become aware of or has witnessed. Investigation Procedures. The principal or designee, upon receipt of a viable report, shall promptly contact the parents or guardians of any student who has been the alleged target of bullying. The principal or designee, upon receipt of a viable report, shall also promptly contact the parents of any student who is an alleged perpetrator of bullying. The actions being taken to prevent further acts of bullying shall be discussed. The school principal or designee shall promptly investigate the report of suspected bullying using a bullying/cyberbullying report form, which may include interviewing the alleged target, alleged perpetrator, staff members, students, and/or witnesses. Support staff shall assess an alleged target's needs for protection and create and implement a safety plan that shall restore a sense of safety for that student. Confidentiality shall be used to protect a person who reports bullying, provides information during an investigation of bullying, or is witness to and has witnessed. during an investigation of bullying, or is witness to and has reliable information about an act of bullying. If the school principal or designee determines that bullying has occurred, he/she shall take appropriate disciplinary action, and if it is believed that criminal charges may be pursued against the perpetrator, the principal shall consult with the school's resource officer and the superintendent to determine if criminal charges may be warranted. If it is determined that criminal charges may be warranted, the local law enforcement agency shall be notified. The investigation shall be completed within fourteen school days from the date of the report. The parents or guardians shall be contacted upon completion of the investigation and informed of the results, including whether the allegations were found to be factual, whether a violation of the policy was found, and whether disciplinary action has or shall be taken. At a minimum, the principal or his/her designee shall contact the parents or guardians as to the status of the investigation on a weekly basis. Disciplinary actions for students who have committed an act of bullying or retaliation shall be in accordance with district disciplinary policies. Disciplinary incidents involving staff will be reported in alignment with the collective bargaining agreement and staff code of conduct. Each school shall document any incident of bullying that is reported per this policy, and a file shall be maintained by the principal or designee. A monthly report shall be provided to the superintendent. Confidentiality shall be maintained to the extent consistent with the school's obligations under law. Retaliation. Retaliation against a person who reports bullying, provides information during an investigation of bullying, or witnesses or has reliable information about bullying shall be prohibited. Target Assistance. The Foxborough Public Schools shall provide counseling or referral to appropriate services, including guidance, academic intervention, and protection to students, both targets and perpetrators, affected by bullying as necessary. Training and Assessment. Annual training shall be provided for school employees who have significant contact with students in preventing, identifying, responding to, and reporting suspected incidents of bullying. Age-appropriate, evidence-based instruction on bullying prevention shall be incorporated into the curriculum for all K-12 students. Publication and Notice. Annual written notice of the relevant sections of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be provided to students and their parents or guardians in age-appropriate terms. Annual written notice of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be provided to all school staff. The faculty and staff at each school shall be trained annually on the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan applicable to the school. Relevant sections of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan relating to the duties of faculty and staff shall be included in the school employee handbook. The Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan shall be posted on the Foxborough Public Schools website. References. Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's model bullying prevention and intervention plan. Legal references. Title VII, Section 703 Civil Rights Act of 1964 as amended. Federal Regulation 74676 issued by EEO Commission. Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. 603 CMR 26. Mass General Laws Chapter 71, Section 370. Mass General Laws Chapter 265, Section 43 and 43A. Mass General Laws Chapter 268, Section 13B. Mass General Laws Chapter 269, Section 14A. Cross-References. AC, nondiscrimination. ACAB, sexual harassment. JBA, student-to-student harassment. JICFA, prohibition of hazing. JK, student discipline regulations.
Excellent reading.
That was an excellent marathon reading. This is such a comprehensive policy.
It is.
And it's really good to see, so...
And the plan, Katie, is so thorough. We went through the whole plan again when we went through the policy, and it really is impressive. It is on the website, it is accessible to everybody, but there was so much work that went into it by the superintendent and the task force in compiling it over the past four years, and it really is a very thorough, comprehensive policy.
That's great. And available to anybody.
I appreciate the work of the Policy Subcommittee.
Really, underscore.
Yes.
And I would like to give a shout-out to Tina, that we were working very much with a deadline, and a thank you to Janet also, who'd had to jump on board. We had our meeting on, so that it could be ready for this. And Tina showed up with a massive migraine and worked her way through this to get it done on time, so special thanks, I think, goes to Mrs. Bellinger tonight.
Gotta do what you gotta do, Debbie.
I know, but you were...
You had a migraine before reading the...
Yeah, imagine how it felt after.
I had to go to bed after that.
Debbie, I have just one question.
Sure.
So, it talks about our annual training that we'll provide and strikes the volunteers.
Yes.
What is the, do you have a sense of thought behind that?
Yes, we actually discussed this in detail, because volunteers, as you know, being a volunteer yourself, are not employed by us, so we can't actually require training. We can require certain things under the law, like quarries, but we can't require, nor do we have an opportunity to provide training in probably the six or seven civil rights-type issues that we do for our own staff each year. So we, we don't provide first-age training, for example, or EpiPen training, or things like that. So it didn't make sense to say we're going to provide training in this when we don't know the things. The other thing is that this training is required for people who have significant contact with students, and we don't expect volunteers to be alone with students, we expect there to be a staff member who is legally responsible for reporting in, you know, in the area. So those are the people really responsible for reporting. So to have volunteers in there implies that a volunteer is under the law responsible for reporting these types of things, and I think that would cut down on our volunteerism. So it's, it's just not practical or actually recommended, so you don't want a practical basis, I'm saying.
Okay. Steve?
Not knowing all the work that you've all done on this, okay, I just want to ask this question. Does the school committee have to seek some kind of legal review to protect the schools, the students, the whole district from liability, exposure, proper insurance, or any other validations that might need to go with this document? I just don't know.
So this is, this is regulation. This, this is regulatory language.
But who validates that it is regulatory language and says, "So saith..."
The state sends us the recommended changes, which we respond to. You saw, we get them as bulletins, and it's the responsibility of the school committee to update policies as a result of changes in, in the regulatory statutes, which is what we're doing.
And that's why we cite it. We cite what...
That's why they're all, that's correct, that's why they cited.
So that's a reference.
So the, the only, I would say, the only liability part of the committee is if I didn't bring the changes in the statutory regulations forward, or I did and you didn't want to update policy. So it's really the updating the policy that is, that is the legal requirement by the committee.
Thank you.
I did go and look at the Mass General Laws Chapter 70, Section, what is it, 370, and myself.
Right, and there's no question of integrity here at all on my part.
No, I know, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
I just didn't know how we...
We have that on our shelves.
Okay, thank you.
And if you have no further questions in two weeks, you can agree to waive the entire reading, if you wish.
And if you do have questions between now and next meeting, please ask me.
Yeah, that's when we do it.
And then maybe I can answer them as, as the thought arises.
Thank you.
But all of these are not things that we just thought about our own, they're really to respond to the regulatory statute, the changes in the, in the law.
We have a question or comment from one of our student representatives. How nice is that?
Go, have me.
Cyberbullying, I feel like you should add in not only the internet postings with social media...
Can you just speak up a little bit?
For the, sorry, for the cyber, for the internet postings, you should also add in just social media, social media in general, because there's so many facets of social media, like now, like the new thing is like there's video messaging, there's Snapchat, there's DMing, direct messages, and like...
There's advices to...
Like kind of add that in, kind of like, because like Snapchat, because now even like Snapchat has a new thing now, you can like direct message someone, but it automatically deletes after you exit out of it. You know what I mean?
So you suggest adding in, in social media, internet postings and social media?
Yeah, kind of social.
Or any other forms of...
Like other forms, because something may change in, in the year, something new may come up, right?
Are we on page two?
I think we're on page one.
No, page one.
Page one.
Just where it's in red.
Oh, I see, is bullying through the use of technology such as, so, so in other words, like perhaps we could put it in, it includes but is not limited to email, instant messages, text messages, social media, and internet postings.
All forms of social media.
So specifically, or, oh, I like to, see, it's good to have a word in the committee. So that sentence would say, it includes but is not limited to email, instant messages, text messages, internet postings, or any other forms of social media.
I think that's a great suggestion.
That is a great suggestion.
Tina, is there terminology in law, I don't know, that says something, exactly on point with him, that says invented or not yet invented?
Well...
I, I know I've read it in like an Apple license agreement or something like that that covers that.
Well, I think to be really specific about the ones would be almost foolish, because the minute we write it down, the next day there's going to be a new one.
That's what I mean.
So this way, if we put, or any other form, or any other form...
Forms of social media.
Form or forms, do you have forms, plural?
I just said forms.
Forms. Or any other forms of social media covers it.
I think that would cover it.
Because they all fall into social media. So I think that's...
And there will be new ones, so if we start...
That's a great idea.
And this is a, this is a current enough policy, I expect we'll get more policy updates in the coming...
Oh, this, and this is such a hot spot.
Exactly.
That we won't have...
Great suggestion.
I think that's actual. We would need to change it in the plan as well, because we took that language from the plan, I don't remember which page, but I know that was the definition.
It's under the definition, so if I go to the back of the, yes, so if we go to page...
Nineteen.
Nineteen in the plan.
Add that same exact line, which right there.
I'm going to find that in here. It's not the exact, it's not the exact, would you see it?
The bottom at the bottom.
Oh, here it is, yes. Internet postings.
Or any other forms of social media.
Any other forms, that's a great suggestion.
Joe, while we're finishing up this, is Mr. Stanton right out there, do you mind just taking a look for me? Thank you.
That's good.
It's a great suggestion.
Sorry, couldn't hear anything.
Yeah, that's great.
Good. Any other, any other questions or comments about the bullying prevention policy? Great reading.
Excellent, thanks.
Debbie made the great suggestion that we change the order of our agenda just slightly and let Mike go home. Let's take just a minute.
Seems to be, he's got the prop of the night, though, back there, so maybe, maybe we could do that, because the other, the other two agenda items will take a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Nothing? It's okay. Thank you.
He was here till three minutes ago.
No, I should have...
One minute ago. When I saw him start to walk out, I should have...
Probably in the bathroom.
We could have done, we could have even done that one with the policies.
That's true.
Okay.
Which we can make mindful of.
I think I got a phone call.
What?
I think you had a phone call.
Okay. Can we move on to one of the other items?
The other, the other two will take a little bit of time, but we might as well, I think.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to send him a text, we'll see if he's around.
Okay, well, we can always interrupt for a minute.
But this is something we can think about for another scheduling time.
I'm sorry, I'm missing it.
No, I mean, maybe acceptance of a donation before three lengthy items.
Yeah, next time.
Another time.
I didn't realize till today Mike was going to be here, so we just talked about it this morning.
There he is.
All right.
All gray.
All right, so, yes, let's invite Mike and his prop.
So we had just an incredibly special day last week, didn't we?
We really did.
Yes.
One of the best.
The best.
Best.
One of the best days.
Amazing day.
And Mike, Mike as emcee and host of the event at the IGO School did just a phenomenal job. I know the reporter, the reporter did a great job covering it. Thank you, Frank. Christine, Christine, yep, she did a great job, yep.
Do this.
And I know a number of us, Debbie and Tina and I, had an opportunity to be there. Bill was there, Amy was there, just, just a very special day, so. Mike, to allow you to get home, Debbie suggested we move this up in the agenda.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. It was really a magical day, I think we're still on a high over there at IGO School, just due to the generosity and kindness of Mr. Kraft, the Kraft family, the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation. It was just a wonderful memory, you know, for the children. I'm excited not only obviously for IGO School and our kindergarten playground, but also realizing it's a community playground as well. You know, any afternoon, especially this time of year, there's just, you know, hundreds of students, families out there at the ball field, so we're excited that it's, it's really, you know, while IGO School is a recipient, that it's really the town of Foxborough that's going to benefit from this.
Mike, why don't you or Bill, just for anyone who isn't quite sure what we're doing with the playground, just take a minute to explain it, if you would.
Sure, you know, for the past, this is my second day here, and what I found out was that for the past literally several years, the IGO School community had been looking at a new kindergarten playground. It's a playground at the front of the school. If you drive by, you can sort of see some pieces of the equipment that have fallen off, fallen apart. So this year what we did is we looked at applying for a Play60 NFL grant. We were fortunate enough to go through that process, several meetings, Debbie and Bill, myself, we met with representatives. They enjoyed our proposal, they, they saw the value in that for the town and the community and the school, and then they presented it to New York City, the NFL headquarters. So what we're trying to do is, is create a new playground. IGO School, we have a grade one through four playground, sort of down by the softball field, this would just be for our kindergarten students. We're excited because we can put some new structures in there that will allow the children to be appropriately challenged, but also in a safe environment. One of the features that I'm very excited about, and Bill actually recommended, is to actually have a track go around the playground, so that way they're able to, whether they jog or run, they can do that piece of it. Right now, they do that, but they have to dodge their peers who are swinging back and forth, so it can get a little bit dangerous out there. Another feature that we're going to do is we're actually going to be expanding the playground, so we're very excited. The town has graciously agreed to help us out with that piece of it. We have some local contractors who we're working with to volunteer their time and efforts as well. I think with any project, you look at it initially and you say, okay, this is it, and we can get this done, and you realize the scope just continues to grow. So, you know, due to Bill and, and his expertise and knowledge, it's been fantastic having him help out and sort of go along the way with that piece of it. We're in the stage now where we have selected the different structures with the teachers. We've had an ongoing group of parents that formed a playground committee. The IGO PTO has been just phenomenal in raising over $30,000 of their own. As you know, that the grant was for $30,000, and Mr. Kraft, out of his own kindness and generosity, matched that, so they gave us a $60,000 grant unexpectedly. We were quite surprised, Debbie and I, and Bill knew it was $30,000, and Amy, but when they said $60,000, we were literally shocked by that. So, and I think the other part of the day, too, was having the players there, but also the senior citizens, Vicky Lowe and all the senior citizens who came to join us. It was really, it's a relationship that already exists, but that sort of wellness aspect of it and the physical activity piece was a pathway that I had never saw before, I never thought of. So before the end of the day, we were talking with Vicky and the senior citizens, we have plans for them to come out next year again, and we're going to do it, do it again. We probably won't have as many cameras and videotapes going on, but it's going to be a fun, an annual event, and I think it just only strengthens our relationship, and it sort of has both parties benefiting from the, from the opportunity as well.
So what Mike's not saying is all the work he put in to planning the event, to working with, I mean, logistically putting the signs, the kids had so many signs and up for the assembly, his, all of his ideas just really were executed perfectly. The kids lining the driveway, waiting for the bus coming in, the kids lining the hallway, you know, for Mr. Kraft and the Patriots plays, and for the seniors to come in, really the work you put into it was amazing, and your, your PTO to raise $30,000, IGO PTO, we have to really give a lot of credit to that. And isn't it wonderful when, when they work so hard with several smaller fundraises to come up with that amount of money, to have somebody come in and, and help you out with the, with the remaining pieces, simply amazing. And it was Vicky Lowe's idea to do an intergenerational event, so I want to give credit to her as well, and everyone had a great time, Bill's expertise, it couldn't, it just was a wonderful day all the way around.
And I, you know, one part that, a person that I forgot to thank was Donna Spigarolo. She, throughout the entire time, also Dan Murphy and Brett Soren, they were phenomenal. They worked for the Patriots and helped us out, guided us, gave us some pointers about past assemblies that they had, and sort of helped us... past assemblies that they had, and sort of helped us take it to another level as well. I think an example of that was one school had the students just greet the players outside when they came. What we did is we literally lined the hallways from the moment they got off the bus, all the way up to the, our green room, which was our media center until the assembly started. And the players commented at that as well. And then also I'd like to thank, I know, some students here, the high school choir, they did a phenomenal job and really started off the assembly great and, you know, unexpected recipients as well. It was fun to see that.
So one of our three soloists is our student, so Ravmir is one of the three soloists you saw, along with Nick Adair and Jenna Cherry. They sang three pieces which were so well received and just adds a lot of flavor to the event. And, yes, so, they were evidently tweeting about wanting some new sound equipment, so Mr. Kraft was so moved by their performance that he's going to provide some of that for them. So it was just a day full of surprises.
Is that a second acceptance we need to do at some point?
Yes, we just don't know. Bill and I are working with Dave Piper actually on what exactly that equipment would be, and we'll be coming forward with that when we've got that outlined, because there was no monetary value to a company that, "I'll buy you some new sound equipment." So, we're going to put together a proposal and run it by the Kraft Group and see where we are. So eventually, yes, that will come to you, but we don't know exactly what that is right now.
Debbie, I think before, or Bruce, excuse me, before we move on, I wanted to mention too that one of the nicer, the whole day was wonderful. But one of the nicest moments, I thought, was when Mr. Kraft was speaking about how one of the first people he met was Vin IGO.
Yes.
And that there was just a remarkable synergy, that he was at the IGO School and Mr. IGO's daughter Christine was taking photographs for the newspaper. It was just, just a moment, just a really great moment, and just shows what a nice relationship there is between the town and the Krafts, and how this all just worked out perfectly.
Yes, you're right. Everything just seemed to come full circle.
I was amazed that, you know, Mr. Kraft and the players as well, how gracious and kind they were, and just down to earth. They were phenomenal with the students and the staff.
The players really were enjoying themselves.
They had fun. They really enjoyed themselves.
Especially after the program was over. I mean, if you could picture this, the program ended, they had...
The formal part of the program.
The formal part. But then there was this planned recess where they were going to participate with the seniors and the kids, which they did, but they didn't like do it and get out. They were loungy, not loungy, but they were there relaxing and...
Were there another hour and a half?
And talking and encouraging all the students. It was great.
And it was such an integration of the Kraft Organization and the Foxborough Schools. It was outstanding.
So our goal is, we hope to break ground this summer and have a nice ribbon cutting ceremony where we invite Mr. Kraft and the representatives back again in hopefully late August or early September.
That's great. Fabulous. One thing that just tickled me, so, some of the young students had special little shirts on, and if you had your special Play 60 shirt on, you were able to talk a little more with the players. I mean, where else in Foxborough can the ultimate recess be created? I mean, I just love that, the ultimate recess.
And I think the senior citizens, they enjoyed it as much if not more than our children too. They had a lot of fun, and it was just, it was great to see. It was a great idea by Vicky and all the work that she did as well.
It was wonderful.
I just would like to definitely acknowledge and thank the Kraft Organization, and also for Debbie's association with the Kraft Association, and just the synergy that's been happening with your, you know, participation with them. So, definitely it's been...
That's a good point, Katie, because Mr. Kraft actually said that publicly, that it's, you know, with the relationship with Debbie specifically and the schools, so that's a great point.
But we're very fortunate to have the Kraft Association here in this town, and so I think, you know...
They've been great benefactors and always interested in young people. So, I think that's really what makes it really special. That event was like no other. One of the little kids said, "Are they coming back next week?"
Oh, are they coming back next week?
Thought she, the rest of the school is going to just...
Tough act to follow.
And I wasn't, I don't even know actually if they meant the players, the seniors, everybody, you know, but...
Let's have them all back.
Let's just do it once a week.
Do you need a motion to accept this?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept generosity of the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation in the amount of $60,000 to Foxborough Public Schools.
With gratitude.
With gratitude. So you made a motion, Tina seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, Mr. Kraft on Thursday morning at seven o'clock being interviewed...
Yes.
At Fox 25 gave another shout out to the Foxborough School System and how well it was being run.
Yes, that's right.
That was very kind of him.
I shared the story of the little girl who told him three different times that she loved him.
Yes, yes.
He'll remember that.
It was a great day.
There was a great photo of him hugging one of the children on his way in, giving the high fives, and we're excited, you know. Everybody, all the students are writing thank you letters. We'll send those off to Mr. Kraft and the Charitable Foundation.
Mike, your staff did a great job.
They did.
The teachers, the front office staff, you know, everyone was polite, respectable, well organized. You know, you could see the stars in their eyes. It was exciting, but they were terrific.
And I have to thank, you know, Debbie and Amy and Bill, because once again, the buildings and ground, the DPW came in beforehand, they, you know, took care of the front of the school. They did all the little things that you, when you have guests, special visitors coming that you want taken care of. Also, we had the central office staff come and help us out. So it was truly a team effort, you know, just to make sure.
That's true. I'm glad you mentioned that, because our town department came in and trimmed the shrubs and brought the street sweeper in, and really, really just, it was a lot of Foxborough pride. I think that was evident. But I do want to compliment your staff, I'm glad you said that, because our teachers, of course, I think are wonderful. But one of the things they did that I thought was so great was when all the students, who are littlest students, our youngest children lining the driveway, and one of the seniors said, you know, we thought, because we're on the bus with Mr. Kraft and the Patriots, that when we pulled up, the kids wouldn't even really know we're there, because they'd be so excited about the Patriots. But what they said to me was, an equal number of students were cheering, you know, "Go Patriots", and the equal number of students were yelling, "Go seniors." So, that's our staff members preparing them for who were the invited guests, what was so exciting about all of them. And that meant a lot to them. So, just a great job all the way around. I look forward to you and Bill laying out all the exciting equipment in that small space, because it's the perfect project for the Play 60 people, because they want it to be community-based, used by a lot of people. You have your kids at the booth playground, you can use it. You're a family that walks up to the center of town, you can use it, and I think it's just the perfect mesh of everyone's interests. So, thank you to the Kraft Organization, the Charitable Foundation, the surprise doubling of the grant and the Play 60 people, and most of all, Mike, to you and your staff. It was just a wonderful day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. End of your update on three-year strategic plan.
Yes, this should say Dr. Amy Burdos on the agenda, because I'm going to turn it right over to Amy, because I asked her to provide the update, and she did, and take it away, Amy.
So, this plan is coming to an end at the end of the school year, and we're full into the process of a new strategic plan. And just to go back for a moment to remind everyone where we are at this point in time. In February, we had an update, so I kept the updates from February so you could see them, since it really wasn't that far back, but yet there's still many other updates even since February. So just as a reminder for those at home, really, that the strategic plan is, it's our guide for everything that we do. It really specifies our vision, our mission, our objectives, the goals that we have, and the strategies that we are going to put into place to meet those goals. So the first objective, when we look towards this plan, really looks at our curriculum and offering a dynamic, rigorous curriculum for our students that's going to promote high levels of achievement for all of them. In February, we talked about all of the different achievement statistics, if you will, from AP scores to SAT to MCAS to all of our baseline and benchmarks. And I'm not going to spend time going over that today, because that is all of the data from this past school year. But some of the things that have been updated since February really have to do with, I'd like to point out, one of the goals under the three-year goals was to sustain strong programs for student achievement in music, art, and athletics, and school-sponsored extracurricular activities. Even since February, we've seen here about the Scholastic Art Awards, about our music program, about just this evening with the teaching and learning highlight, first place once again with Construction Career Day. So it continues to be really, really strong with a very dynamic extracurricular programs that we offer for students. As far as the strategies in meeting those goals, we've continued to increase the extracurricular activities even for our elementary students. You think about the IGO Engineering Club that you saw at the last school committee meeting. Just really exciting. And when I think about that, one of the girls who said, "I never really thought about engineering before until I did this, and it was fun." And so now I'm thinking about it. That's what we want to do. We want to see more students into the math and sciences, and we want to see more girls. I mean, that's definitely a push nationwide, and we see that right here with the emphasis that's being placed on those extracurricular activities. So that's wonderful to see. The K-12 curriculum review, we had the update on that for social studies, which was fantastic with the work from Diane Cassily and Tom Murray at the last meeting, and we'll look forward to the fall for the wellness K-12 review. Professional development, we now are offering more courses onsite for our teachers than we've offered in the past. So just this past school year, during the school year, we had two graduate courses that were onsite. We are now going to have four additional courses that are taking place over the summer and into the fall. And a lot of that really is the excitement of our teachers. As an example, one of the math courses, which was K to 2, focused on K to 2, the teachers were really asking for that next building of that course. And Allison Mello is the one teaching the course, and it really speaks to the caliber of not only her as a curriculum director, but also as a teacher, and a teacher of teachers. So, we have that course, we have a number of literacy courses, and working with Diane Cassily to put in place, as well as the Understanding by Design course, which really focused K-12 curriculum. We had that course this spring, and we are offering that one again starting in the fall, because there was really high demand for it. So we have people that are wanting to jump in and take courses, and we're not having a problem filling the courses at all. Our second objective, which is really strengthening school culture and ensuring that our students, staff, and all of our stakeholders feel safe, feel valued and have a voice. So much has gone into this with the different K-12 insight perception surveys that we've had, and really talking and seeing the growth and the increased perception of what we're doing here and building culture and climate in the schools, that we have not only had three years of survey data that we've seen increase as far as in a positive way, but that's also been mirrored in the TELMA survey that's happened twice now through Massachusetts. And having the participation rate, just in that survey alone, you have to have more than 50% of your educators to get that information back when it's published, and we've continued to have that really be strong as far as the participation and have that information. The Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan that we talked about this evening, continuing to update that and make sure it's current and all of the work that goes into that, we've talked about that this evening. And having the nights here and really the partnership with them and the extra information that they're able to bring to us that we wouldn't be able to have without them, it really does add to the culture and climate of the schools. Objective three, preparing our students for the skills of the 21st century. We've talked a lot about how we're a good 14 years into this, but it really is the four Cs as we refer to them, the collaboration, the creativity, the communication, and the critical thinking, and then really maximizing educational technology as we're pulling those four Cs together. I think the big emphasis here for this particular objective this year has been on the new technology plan that we've put into place. And along with that, the Masque evaluators, which we've talked about many times here at the table, and the amount of work that's gone into that. There's 12 of us on that group, and we're continuing right now to pull all that data together and call it into a report, to have it ready for you at the next meeting. And there is a lot of information. There's a lot of great information, and it's going to be a great starting point for us. In addition, having the technology audit that took place here recently, we're having all of that information as well. So there's going to be a lot of really rich data, and the goals that come with a new strategic planning process from that information, I think is going to be really exciting as far as setting the direction of where we're heading. Objective four, the strong support for public education. Town of Foxborough, excellent example of that just now. We really do have wonderful partners in the community, in the schools, really everywhere. I mean, when we think about the budget and CIP and our budget being passed, just most recently at the Maytown meeting, it truly shows the support that we have. And the strategies that I think that we're employing to help put out there all of the things that we're doing have been a benefit to us and to the greater community as well. So, the NFL Play 60 is just one of the many partnerships that we've seen in addition to where there's the clergy breakfast that Debbie's had, bringing the seniors in for tours, and the exciting Bus to the Future for next year that she has planned and working with them. So, it really is building what's strong even stronger. So I think that as this strategic plan sunsets here at the end of the school year, we've done a lot of work so far with the Strategic Planning Group that's in place now, many different stakeholders that are there, and we've spent a lot of time really looking at what is the vision, the mission for our schools, what's the direction, what will our new goals look like, the objectives, and what will the strategies be to meet those goals of what are really important. So, I think it's been a really successful three years, and it's been exciting that we've been able to meet so many of the goals and exceed them.
Couldn't agree more.
I think, you know, we talked about this before, but we really feel that creating the first real strategic plan we've had, to my knowledge, three years ago, and I know that Debbie and Tina were both on it at that time as well, you know, it really was a learning experience, and we didn't know at the time if we got the right bite-sized pieces, you know, were we aggressive enough for three years where we could really accomplish some things, but yet not make it doable, so at the end of three years, we still had 90% of it to do. And I'd say one of the things I'm most pleased about is with all the work we've been doing and paying a lot of attention to it, where are we with all these things, keeping them all moving forward, we really are wrapping up that three-year strategic plan just about right. And so the few things on there that haven't been addressed, or to the extent we would, what we're finding is they're going to morph into something a little bit different in the next plan. So they're not being forgotten, but while the emphasis, for example, in the technology goal, isn't just about technology, what's going to happen is that objective through our work appears to be morphing into an infrastructure goal with technology kind of infused across all of the objectives, whether it's to enhance the academic achievement of students, whether it's to enhance culture and climate. So we're really reconfiguring that objective the most, and I think good for our Strategic Planning Committee three years ago, that we got just about the right size amount of work to work on, and with a little bit that's going to roll into the future plan. So I want to thank everybody that's involved in that.
That will definitely be ever-changing.
Other comments? Yeah, I just want to say, I'm really very pleased as you go through all this, I'm pleased on a number of fronts. You know, first of all, with your attention to each of these areas, you know, the two of you, and with Bill on the finance and operations side, you know, I think we balanced nicely, you balanced nicely, these four objectives. I think we have made really good progress. I mean, I think if we look back the last four or five years, in each of these areas, we've made demonstrable progress, so.
Absolutely.
And the final thing is, I'm really pleased that we're focusing on technology, being the technology guy, one of the technology guys, I guess, but I do think we have room to go there.
Yes, I agree.
I think it's going to be important. So I think we are, I think you are doing a nice job. nice job.
Thank you.
So I like the idea of sunsetting this one, and can't wait to see the next one.
It's coming.
It's coming, probably not by the end of June, but maybe by before, as we open school, I'm thinking, because we're going to need probably a meeting or two in the summer because we want to make sure we have the draft in good shape. You know, one of the interesting things is Amy was preparing the update on the strategic plan, the final update, I'm calling it, and I was preparing the materials for our next agenda item, which is my evaluation. So when you see it under Objective One, at the last report of this, we had increased opportunities for enrichment and challenge, 37% district-wide between then and now. And I forgot to tell Amy, I went back and checked with each principal about the things that we hoped to add for the school year. Were they added? Did they happen? And I checked with everyone. And I was so surprised at the number, I actually asked Bill to check it for me. We actually increased the opportunities district-wide by 70%.
Oh, my.
Seventy, seven-zero. So, you know, I'm pleased with that. And that was a two-year goal, so we were working hard on it for quite a long time. And once you work so hard on something like that, it becomes part of what you do. So now we can move on to some other areas of tension that we have mutual interest in, like technology.
You know, so much of this is due to the leadership team that we have in place, you know, not just the three of you, but I think all the building-level administrators, I think that makes such a difference.
They all take their piece of ownership, which is wonderful. So when, for example, when we look at our school district goals that we do together, or the strategic plan, when I first became superintendent three years ago, we had the new superintendent-type goals, the entry plan, and all of our department heads at the retreat, they would look at all those things and say, "What piece do I own? What can my department do?" Or for principals, "How does my building contribute, or what does that look like for me?" And you've seen it trickle down into the school improvement plans, and that kind of consistency and connection is really, I think, how a district moves forward. So it's a lot of good work.
And I would just say for anyone new to the district, the strategic plan's another good document to take a look at to understand what are we working on. So, okay, I think in there you provided a segue to the next topic.
I did. So...
I picked up on that, did you?
Yes, yes, that was good.
Very smooth.
Yes, that was smooth. This is the time of year where you start the superintendent's evaluation. So I did something a little bit different this year than I did from last year. When I looked at the timeframe for last year, at the first meeting in June, we're present here, I just provided the overview of the superintendent evaluation process because there's so much material just related to that. And I'd say at that point, it was only the second time the committee had used the new Massachusetts system. So I think last year we had decided to take a meeting and just look at the whole process and make sure everybody understood it. Then at the mid-June meeting, which will be coming up for us two weeks from now, then I provided to you all of my materials about my goals, my progress toward my goals, and how I assess my progress toward the goals and my performance and the standards. So that was part two. What I've done this year, knowing that last year the committee said, you know, "At that point, you then took it off to start your individual evaluations." And I think there was a three-week period that you were getting it to Mrs. Lord, who was doing the...
All right, we'll go to Katie.
...that she was writing last year.
With the compilation.
And so I remembered that. So what I did for you this time is I put in all of the materials you'll need, an overview of the five-step cycle, you can see in there, just because it's always good to remind, when you only do something once a year, it's good to look at everything again. What does the implementation guide say from the Department of Ed about the superintendent evaluation? So that's that big section in there called Part Four. I provided a copy of the forms that are to be used by individual members and by the chair, the Jardini, who will be doing the composite. So which forms are you supposed to use? And I put those in there again. And then I put in my personal materials and where I felt I was and how I met my goals. So those are all in your packet for you. I thought if I front-load, this will give you really a month or till the end of the month to do the individual evaluations and start getting it to them. Because we learned last year that the Department of Ed asks for our ratings, all the teachers, all the administrators, we must submit five ratings, one on each of the four major standards, and a fifth on the overall rating for each person. So each employee has five ratings submitted, and they didn't tell us until around this time last year that they were going to collect it in August. So that was actually later than this. I think it might have been end of June or beginning of July. So because of that timeframe, the superintendent's evaluation has to be completed a little bit earlier than we used to do it in September. And that's why you see, you saw in my new contract, that it's by July. So it really should be done by the end of July. So that's up to the committee to decide if you want to do it at the retreat, if you want to have a separate meeting just for that. But last year, what happened was, because it was the first year, and they didn't tell us what the submission date was, every district had ratings for teachers, as we did, because their process is completed before they leave for the year, but not necessarily for the administrators. So they gave us a few-month period to finish that up and submit late, but that's not going to be allowed every year.
So can we, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Can we just clarify what the dates are, so everybody knows moving forward? Everybody is going to complete their individual...
I would propose that we do the discussion of this at the beginning of the retreat, which would be, I think we're looking at, what, the second week of July, Janet? And we're going to nail down a date on that soon. So what that would mean, Katie, if you're comfortable, we would have to have the accumulation done by the second week of July before the retreat. So let me come back up from that to say, by when would you want the input that you could then do the compilation from?
So are you saying then that I would present the compilation at the onset of the retreat?
I'm proposing that as an idea.
To discuss?
So we start filling this out.
What that would mean is we would have to do our forms.
Okay, right.
Get them to you by a date, let's say July 1st, whatever date you want, and give you enough time. Maybe it's not July 1st. Maybe it's the end, you know, middle of this month.
When does it have to be, when does this have to be done?
Around the second week of August. They haven't given us a date yet, but last year it was right in the second week of August.
So, second week of August.
Well, I would say it probably should be completed by the end of July, to be safe.
Do we have a meeting? We want to do that in public, right?
Yes. Or it could be the first week of August is probably safe. It definitely wasn't the first week of August. And I remember because I was on vacation when I was trying to submit the last.
I remember that, too.
Do we have a meeting scheduled for August?
Well, it's always the Monday, the last Monday in August. So that's the opening, it's usually the night before we open school.
Which is I was picturing if we could, but you have the bulk of the work here, so...
Yeah. I think it's good. I think we should try to do it early.
Yeah.
I mean, if the committee agrees, which means, and then they have to start working on it and get it to me, I'm going to need at least two, at least two weeks. And I don't know when our retreat is.
I think we're talking about either July 7, 8, or 9, but Monday might be hard coming back from a long weekend. So I think Janet had collected your information, the 8th or the 9th, I think was good for most people, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Fairness to Janet, she's waiting on the chair to give her a precise, a precise day, but we've said it'd be that week.
That week.
So Katie...
Tuesday or Wednesday, that week.
Yes, and we'll confirm back with everyone to which exact date. I just need, I'm checking some travel schedule, that's all. So Katie, you want two weeks?
So if it's the 8th, let's say, which is a Tuesday.
Yep.
Be better for Wednesday for me, but, okay.
Oh, I'm not saying...
Wednesday, wouldn't we?
It could be. It's up to you.
We haven't set the date, so that's good. Have you given Janet the input?
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, now we know.
Okay. So then back up...
Let's say it's Wednesday the night.
Yeah, let's say it's Wednesday the night, so back up two weeks. Oh, boy, that's going to be tricky, because then it's like...
It'll be the 25th of June.
I gotta get that done.
Just in case people are making it an extra-long weekend or aren't back yet.
I'm traveling back from a family event.
Good question.
Okay, so what time will we tell them?
We'll announce that at our next meeting. Would that be all right?
I'm just looking at...
We will make sure you know.
Just looking at the calendar with Bill here, would the committee be able to get all of their information to me by Friday, June 20?
We need to meet individually with Debbie.
Yeah.
So I think that's possible, but it's going to be tricky.
It's going to be tricky with the 4th of July week, and I just don't know if I'm going to have time to do that, you know? That's why I was thinking if I got it the 20th.
I don't want to minimize the importance of this exercise because it's important, but having been through this a few times now, it's not a terribly time-consuming thing individually. But Tina's right, we need to go through thoughtfully our thoughts and then meet with Debbie, so...
So people would need to meet with her before the 20th.
Yes, so the 20, what I'm thinking is, because school gets out the 23rd, those days, like 23, 24, 25, might be prime time for meeting with me because schools wound down. Before that, it's, it can be a little hectic and soon. So what if it were to you by the Thursday, what's the...
The 26th.
26. What if it's by the 26th?
The 26th.
Thursday, the 26th. Or Wednesday, the 25th?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
So to Katie by the 25th, meet with Debbie. Which day is Debbie, your best for you?
Oh, everybody makes their own different day appointment.
Right, but 23rd to 25th would be ideal.
That, or if one or two before that, I could do. I probably couldn't fit five individual appointments in before school ended because, you know, a lot going on.
So just to review, we will complete our individual assessments and meet with you individually in time to then give our input to Katie by the 25th.
Yes.
And then Katie will prepare the compilation, which, Katie, you've done before, right? It's, you'll...
Oh, I don't think I have with the new.
Okay, it's not, Debbie and I have done it. It's not, I mean...
With the new.
It won't take you too long, but I can help you with the process. So then you'll have that ready for July 8th, 9th-ish.
Yeah.
And I think, we'll help you. It's not...
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. Everybody okay with that schedule?
Yeah.
Good.
I mean, I would like to do it at the same meeting as our retreat. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that'd be...
That makes sense.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to spend time with the committee now or next meeting, talking about your input, just summarizing?
It's up to you. We can just, I can take you on a brief tour tonight, if you'd like, and then you have two weeks. We're going to put on the next agenda, Superintendent's Evaluation Continued Discussion. So if you have questions tonight, I'm happy to answer them.
I think we have a new member, and I think to get him kind of aware of the process, if we could do some of it tonight.
Sure. So the five-step cycle, for anyone who might be watching home that's interested, is, it starts with a, it started last year after my last evaluation with a self-assessment and taking in mind, also keeping in mind the joint goals that we have, a self-assessment where I am, and then I set goals, which you approve in the fall. So after this evaluation, I'll be, based on your input and your areas of interest, I will be setting new annual goals that you will approve in the fall. So that happened last September. And then I implement the plan for all of those goals. And it doesn't include just those goals, because it includes everything you expect me to work on, like the strategic plan and the tech plan and everything else. And then around mid-year, which we've been doing in February, is considered the formative assessment or the mid-cycle review, and that's the opportunity for the committee to, I give you, I thought it worked really well this past year, where it's, what am I, what am I most proud of that's happened this year in terms of achievements? And I might give you some documentation that speaks to those things. And then, what am I working really hard on? What are my major areas of focus and effort? Thought that really worked well to summarize where I thought we are and where I am. And then you complete the summative evaluation by July. So that's kind of how the cycle goes, and it repeats annually. So what you do as a committee is that if you look at and go past the Part Four, if you look at and go past the blank forms...
Although just to be clear, Steve, these blank forms are what we fill out.
Yes, those will be for you to write on.
He won't be quite clear.
So, and you know, if you need more copies, let us know. Janet will have them. So what you will be doing is really what I did in the self-assessment, which is looking at the goals that you see there. I provided you with an update on where I was with the goals. And if it was a two-year goal, it says, I put in actual data, if it's a goal that you can have actual data on. As you can see, for example, I don't want to read them all, because I think we've got a lot of read-alouts. But if you see my goal number three for district improvement, if you remember last year, as part of my goals that you approved, I had a growth plan for STEM subjects and business tech ed, and I've included that here again for you tonight, as I did in the mid-year, what's happening with those things. So I wrote a big goal to be continued. So that's certainly nothing that I would expect to, or I wouldn't expect you to think that I work on it for a year and then it's going to disappear. So you'll expect to see that on my next year's goals as well. The tech plan, something either related to the tech plan or based on the MasQ evaluators report, you'll see in there, and how I felt I'd done on that. The outreach to constituents. So these are the goals that you approved exactly as worded last fall, and then I provide you with an update on how I did on each of my goals. And you can see some I met, a couple have made significant progress, and I'm still working on them, and then one I exceeded based on the data. When you look beyond that, under each of the broad standards, standard one being instructional leadership, and the specific indicators, 1A through E, under that, you can see curriculum instruction assessment, evaluation, data informed decision-making. You will rate me on each of those. So the one thing that isn't in your packet, if you're interested, I know you've seen a lot of this before, the very detailed standards for the superintendent, I've given you copies several years in a row. If you want that, I can email it to you, or you can find it on the Department of Ed website. It's just Superintendent's Rubric is what it's called, and it's quite lengthy, if you really want to refer to that, if you're making your judgments. I'm more than happy to provide it, but I already killed practically a forest doing this. So I didn't, I chose not to put that in. Some of you may still have it, may be redundant, or you can find it. And then standard two, management and operations. So it goes without saying that I can't accomplish anything under instructional leadership without Amy Burdows. I can't accomplish anything under management and operations without Phil Yuchna. And I can't accomplish much of anything under family and community engagement without families and community partners, which is the Play 60 people. So, and under professional culture, that's something we all work on, that's standard four. I think the teachers, the administrators, all of us really, I believe, even though everything is important, I really think that standard four is the most important. Because if you don't have a positive, energetic, professional culture, you really can't achieve the goals that you want. So in the way I view my role, that professional culture almost is the underlying foundation to all the other things that we're trying to achieve. And so that's very important. As you can see, if you've ever read the Superintendent's Rubric, and I know we went through it in great detail two years ago when it came out, you know, I don't do my job in isolation, not one part of it. So it's with people, with the team, with our employees, with our students. So I provided that for you, and along with very specific data on the enrichment and challenge and how we got to the 70% increase, so that you can see what happened, and specifically an update on the STEM and business tech ed growth plan, so that you can see which things, because this is a pretty comprehensive plan that I wrote, and it's something we're all continuing to work on. So I provided you with an update on where we were with those specific action steps for that.
This is extremely helpful.
Yeah, well-prepared.
You're documenting.
Good point.
Yes. It's very well appreciated, Debbie.
I'm just thinking, too, if Steve has any questions, right, he can meet or, you know, contact you.
Oh, absolutely.
Obviously, yeah. Just given the first time you're doing it, you might want a little...
I will stay within the bounds of ethics and meet, or call anybody I have questions with for the record. Thank you.
I just want to read into record how Debbie evaluated herself in each of the standards, just for the public hazard. And this isn't, I don't think your work, well, it is your work alone, but there's been some precedence on this before, because we've had to evaluate you in these areas before. But under instructional leadership, Debbie has assessed herself as proficient.
Are you going to read them all? Oh, okay.
Yeah, just the categories.
Okay. I don't think we've done this before, but that's okay, because this is, obviously it's your judgment that supersedes everything else, not necessarily mine. So...
I think because part of the process is your evaluation.
Right.
And we'll make that a public discussion. Okay, I'll hold on that. If we want to do that, we'll do that next week.
I think next time might be good. Only because...
So let me do it this way.
It should be, this is, these are, obviously, I know you know, the materials I prepare to, so you know where I think I am, but what really matters is where you think I am. So I don't want it to be a story in of itself where I think I am.
So let me just read the categories, so the public knows. We do rankings in the following categories: unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary, for each of the standards that Debbie talked about. And then we do a summative assessment overall.
Yes.
And you're right, it's probably more appropriate for us to talk about our evaluation.
I think so. I mean, these are just, that's what matters. Let's face it, that's what matters, is how you judge my...
Right. Debbie, thank you for giving this to us now. I think we can get started on it, and...
I think it was a better idea to give you more time.
And because I know last year was a little bit of the timing, so this is great. I'm going to start working on that.
Good, thank you.
Steve, does it make sense, generally speaking?
Yeah, and I saw a lot of this, although I didn't participate in it last year. I had all the paperwork and...
Yeah, you watched us go through the process.
I did, yeah.
Steve, if...
So it's not totally foreign.
And if there's anything, I know the very, the first year you did it, you had the big binder with everything under the sun.
Yes.
Which was very actually informative. But I know last year, you, if there was documentation, we wanted to see that, we had seen that maybe we couldn't find with our giant stack of school committee paperwork. You were very helpful in providing whatever.
Yes, thank you.
Documentation. So, and I know there's a whole list down at the bottom there, examples of evidence documents. So I found that personally very helpful last year.
Right. So is there any standard or indicator at all that you're not sure, or based on seeing me at the meetings or whatever else you do, you're not sure how you view it? Just ask, and I can, I can produce a mini binder. But I'm just kidding. Nobody wants the binder.
Actually, I have this notes to myself as bind for myself, so thank you. We're on the same wavelength. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Debbie, thank you. That was a great overview.
Thank you.
So we are on to other matters.
Already?
I think so, unless I skipped any of them, which I did last meeting, so...
What's going on Sunday around here? Is it good?
I mean, we're not hearing from Mr. Yuchna today.
He's not on the agenda. He's not on the agenda.
He can chime in on other matters if he wants.
We have a lot of other matters.
All right, let's roll right through it.
Most importantly, dedication of the Sam Burns Community Field. This flyer invitation went out to all constituency groups in town, will be announced to students multiple times this week. It is a week from Thursday. It is Thursday... It is Thursday evening, June 12th, 2014, at 5:45 PM, outdoors here at the high school at the turf field. And it will feature our Foxborough High School percussion ensemble. And as you know, this, this proposal to name the field, the Sam Burns Community Field, came from our students at the high school. So they will be the first speakers up after the welcome. Sam's parents will be here, as will Mr. DeVellis from the TURF subcommittee who initiated the idea of a turf field, that committee in town. Tina's going to speak on behalf of the school committee. Mr. Kraft will be here, speaking on behalf of the Kraft Channel Foundation and the NFL LISC Local Initiative Support Corporation Grant Program, which awarded the initial grant to the TURF subcommittee of $250,000. If you recall, that was the first seed money. And then closing will be Mrs. Myers-Packler, the principal of Foxborough High School. So this is a public event, we invite the public to come. I sent it to Frank today, the reporters kindly agreed to, to advertise this event. And we're looking forward to having the field dedicated before the students leave for the school year. I think that's really important to all of us, to do that.
I think it's great that you did this, Debbie, and that you've got it all organized, because I was thinking just the other day while using the field with one of our local community teams, that we had committed to do this and hadn't yet followed through. So thank you for putting this together.
Great. So we hope to see everyone there. That's the most important. As somebody mentioned, what's going on Sunday, so graduation is Sunday. I saw the weather report tonight, and I think it's going to be sunny. Class night is this Thursday, all media members are invited to class night.
Where, what time and where are we supposed to be for class night, if we're coming?
I always come prepared, just a moment.
If it starts at seven, but we usually gather.
Class night is at... Seven o'clock in the high school gymnasium.
So we meet.
Seniors report to the cafeteria at 6:30.
So we would probably go to the guidance?
No, not for class night, we go right into the gym. It's in the gym. Where the award, you know.
I know, but usually we try to sit together.
Um, I don't think at class night we do. I think, well, we have a row at the front, so go up the front. But it's seats in the, in the, in the, in the gym, as usual.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that, as you know, you may have heard, like, Mrs. Myers-Packler, the high school faculty, made a little bit of change this year. Because if you've been to class night before, it, it's historically gone about three and a half hours and it's very, very long. So what she's done this year is tonight in the auditorium was scholarship night. So many of the myriad of scholarships have been out on class night. Instead, the students are notified, they were awarded a scholarship, they went to.
These are private ones, special private.
Yes, so these were awarded tonight in the auditorium to the recipients. There will be some scholarships that are still given out on class night, as per the tradition, and there will be others given out at graduation. So class night is the night for the seniors, tonight, so separating it out a little bit and, and making the events a little bit more special, so that the scholarship winners have a little bit more. But there will still be some scholarships given out at class night. And again, the town scholarships are given out at graduation. Okay. The J.C.'s Community Spelling Bee was this past Friday night. I am disappointed to say, our team did not win. But I appreciate Mrs. Abrams, Mrs. Forrest, Mrs. Cassily, who are on a team with me. It was a lot of fun. I wish the turnout had been better. So was the J.C.'s Community Spelling Bee, most recently run back in 2005. So it's been a number of years. And I understand that the winning team, Jeff Lovely's winning team, also won in 2005. So we all have our eyes on that team if they repeat this next year. Um, let's see.
Jeff Lovely.
Sounds like a little challenge.
I want to make sure I mention that Kristin Durico, one of our really wonderful social studies teachers at Foxborough High School, and if I've mentioned this in another committee meeting, I'm not sure. But she was one of the 2015 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year semifinalists. So there'll be a little award ceremony that we'll be going to, that she will be recognized at the state level and, but she did make it into the 10 semifinalists. So I want to congratulate her and recognize that. And then Amy has a very important other matter.
A couple, a couple actually. The first one is related to Park versus MCAS. As we've talked many times, that that is a decision that we have to make next year, whether we're going to go and participate in the pilot, which this year with the field testing that we've talked some about, where we've had just certain grades in certain classes, participate either in the paper and pencil or the online, we do not receive any information back at all on the field testing. The pilot is next year and school districts are asked to decide by the end of June whether they are going to go Park or MCAS next year. The direction that we've received from MASC is that that is a school committee vote in order to determine which direction we go. However, what they say is that the decision to administer Park or MCAS in the spring of 2015 requires the approval of the school committee. And I would suggest that the school committee should solicit the recommendation of the superintendent. So we've been obviously working a lot on, on this. And so at the next school committee meeting, myself and Diana and Allison are going to a Department of Ed meeting even tomorrow at Bridgewater on Park versus MCAS. So they're doing a lot of work as far as information sessions and then just thinking within our own context, what makes sense. So we will be coming at the next meeting with a recommendation and our rationale for our recommendation of which direction we go next year with that choice.
Amy, I know you always do this, but obviously this is such an important decision for the committee. I know you'll provide us with information prior to that meeting, so we'll, we'll be able to be prepared to make that vote.
Yes, we will, we will have a summary of you, for you, of the pros and cons and the benefits of what we're recommending. This has shifted a little bit, so if this surprises you tonight, it, it should. Because as it was originally conceived, it was a district decision, Park or MCAS, and went to shift. But during this school year, a committee in a, a community in Massachusetts, a, a school district that was going to go Park, the school committee voted against it. And so this has created a new, probably rightly so, regulation that says school committees must be involved mutually in the decision to Park or MCAS or to Park or not to Park. I think that's my new phrase. So that, that has shifted. So if you're hearing about it now as a member and saying, oh, we're participating, yes, that has shifted. Originally, it was a district, an administrative decision, and now it's a joint partnership, which probably is a better way to go.
But if you look across, excuse me, Katie, for a second, but if you look across the country, it's not just this one district in Massachusetts, there's a, there's a movement across the country, a number of places opting out of Park, right?
And that's what created the, that district from, from doing that.
I'm really glad we're having the discussion, or going to have the discussion. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I was just going to say, definitely, we'll have like a risk benefit kind of analysis of each.
Well, just the benefits of one versus the other.
Yeah, okay.
And then a recommendation.
What it means to go one way versus the other.
Yeah, that's it. The benefits of path A, benefits of path B, and the outcomes, what happens two years down the line as a result of path A or path B.
Perfect.
And then we'll tell you what we think. And then we'll, and then you'll tell us what you think. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, looking forward to that one. The only other teaser for the next school committee meeting, just to give you a little bit of information, there's been a tremendous amount of work also with district determined measures. So if you think about the evaluation for Debbie that we were talking about with the four standards, the ratings for each of the four standards, and then the rating for the overall, so that's five ratings that we're applying, in, in that case, to the superintendent. It's the same with teachers, same with me, all of us, anyone that is an educator. There is another rating that will be going into effect as part of the educator evaluation model system, which will be in effect at the end of the 2015-16 school year. And it's a student impact rating. We've talked about this a lot in the past, but just a kind of where it was phased in at different pieces. So we had to identify district determined measures, at least two for every single educator. If MCAS is.
Two per educator.
If MCAS is a grade that you teach, that we've talked about the student growth percentile, that you have to use MCAS if you are one of the, you know, teachers that that impacts. So we've been identifying assessments that are, that are meaningful, that assess student achievement and growth. Because we want that to be something that's, that's really going to impact what we do and what we're using and what we find meaningful. So we've piloted some different assessments this year. And as you know, we're, we're in a really good spot as far as the number of assessments that we have in place. That's definitely something that we've learned over the course of this year comparative to other districts. We have so many assessments, both formative and summative, that are in place. So we had a really good starting point to look at, well, what do we currently use? And is this going to be meaningful and to assess student growth over time? Because in the end, if you are, for instance, a fourth grade teacher and you have the two district determined measures, you're going to look at that group of students that you have for a full year, then you're going to have the next group of students for the next year, you're going to look at the assessment there, because they want to have a pattern or a trend. So it's over different groups of students. But it ends up being another impact rating on the educator evaluation process. So we had to turn into the Department of Ed by yesterday, what our district determined measures are for every educator. And.
Just to give you a sense of the challenge, I want you to think about art teachers, I want you to think about Mr. DeBona. Think about a wellness teacher who serves all the kids in elementary school. They each have to have two measures of student achievement. So I, I suggested to Amy today that the next meeting, she might want to, this has been a huge project that Amy's worked on all year, really to her credit. It's, it's huge. And so we thought, since you're going to be hearing about it, that we should put it on the last meeting agenda and she can give you an idea of what kinds of district determined measures, we've submitted. And then we'll be working on them next year, is more or less piloting them.
It's important for the whole culture-climate discussion too, right?
Yes. Debbie, just to give us a sense, and the community a sense of the number of educators that you had to do this for.
Uh, we have two hundred and forty-nine. Forty, fifty, about 250 teachers.
So that's, that's a huge gender taking.
About 450 employees all over, but about 250 teachers.
But even if you have a two-fifty, just one thing.
And administrators though, because we need them too. We have to have a district determined measure. Two of them. So it's all of our principals, anyone with a license.
Right.
So speech therapists, psychologists. Everyone who has a professional license will now have two measures of student achievement attached to their evaluation in the 215-216 school year.
Steve?
Amy, I don't know the answer to this question. Is there a tie-in to out-of-district private schooling we do for the special education to this type of measurement? Like, do, do we get that information from the schools that we have the other students to?
No, we're responding, this is tied to educator evaluation. This is tied to people we evaluate. We don't evaluate out-of-district placement teachers.
Okay.
So it's not tied to that.
So, but do we get any feedback from the?
Well, it's through, all through the IEP. All of that is monitored through students' individual education programs. And, but they're not our teachers, so we don't evaluate them. So this would not.
That's what I meant by tie-in. I didn't know if there was a connection there. Thank you.
So we'll have that on our agenda next time.
So we'll just, to give you a flavor of the types of.
A flavor.
Things that we're looking at and measuring. Actually, you know, it really has been some wonderful, rich discussions when we look at some of the assessments that are in place and looking at, well, where is this particular child, you know, at, at the beginning? Because when you look at maybe a student that struggles, you can see tremendous growth. And if you have someone, we've talked about this with MCAS, that are really hitting the ceiling, we still want to challenge those students and see that growth. So having assessments that are in place to really look at it through that lens of whether it's a low, moderate, or high impact on students? And how are we going to collect that information and look at it collaboratively together?
Right.
It, it really does push for more collaboration, more looking at student work together and that calibration, which raises expectations.
Right. Because no matter what role you play, you have to really be thoughtful about how do I impact student achievement? I'm a guidance counselor. What role do I play? What measures of student achievement do I contribute to? And so it, it will, even though I don't particularly yet say I'm a fan of the public nature of it, it, it does foster that. I think, I think this, if you can imagine, I think most districts across the country, because this is a federal piece, are very worried about the, we, we've all learned from the public nature of it in other states, where they, they publish the data kind of in isolation, and it doesn't really paint the whole picture. So I think there's a lot to worry about it in the future and how it actually plays out. But the collaborative process of talking about what role I play and how do I impact student achievement is a good one. But I think there is great reason to be concerned about how this rolls out publicly, because in other states, it's been a huge public relations nightmare, I'm sure you're name of, you're aware of. So that's, that's the problem, is that we are, we're submitting them, we're going to try them out next year, but how the country, and especially Massachusetts, how this plays out in the end will be a cautionary note, I think.
And I think too, when you look at MCAS, we've always looked at that as, that's Massachusetts and other states have different assessments. These are district determined. So what we choose for particular grade spans in an area are not the same as the district next door to us. So it, we really have to come back to the context of where we are.
And that's another reason to worry, because we have high standards. So if we're going with real meaty measures that really will make a difference for students and another district does not, they could be doing 10 times less than we are, but look better publicly when the article comes out in, you know, the Boston paper. Versus, we're working harder and have higher standards and much more aggressive district determined measures, and we think we're making more of an impact, but it, so that's, that's, I just want to paint an accurate picture. It's not, the whole process isn't 100% to be excited about.
Okay. Is that it, Amy?
That's it.
Other, other matters?
I have a couple things. I always do. I don't know if anybody noticed, but our, our Eagle Scout candidate, Declan Maloney, had a guest column in this past week's reporter. He is going to be working on his Eagle project, hopefully with lots of community volunteers. I know personally, one mom and two Boy Scouts who'll be there to help him on June 21st from eight to one, which is a Saturday. And I think the following Saturday, June 28th, from eight to one. And hopefully, he will wrap it up on the 28th with his plantings, birdhouses, bat houses, and check dams, so.
I saw that he was on the Fox 25 zip trip.
He was.
So I hoped that that bought him a lot of exposure, so that people would buy some birdhouses and.
He's been doing a great job with his publicity and fundraising. The other thing I wanted to mention is, this Thursday, our sixth graders are going to the Tri-Town STEM Expo at Wheaton. My son is going, and actually, my eighth grade son is going with a small group from his technology elective at the Ahern, Ms. Tetros.
That's this Thursday.
Technology elective. So I am hoping to stop by there. I'll have to be as unobtrusive as possible, so as not to embarrass any Bellinger boys. But I'm very excited about it. And they're going to be there with, it's Mansfield, Norton, and Foxborough. And it sounds very interesting.
And that's going all day.
Yes.
Because we have graduation rehearsal at 10 o'clock. So I'm trying to figure out how to get there and be at graduation rehearsal.
It is. It is supposed to go starting at 9:00 AM, so all, then the kids get back at the end of school.
Norton, Mansfield, and Foxborough?
Yep, at Wheaton College. So that's very exciting. And then Thursday evening is also the sixth grade band concert, as well as class night. So I will be listening to my favorite baritone horn player, but I'll.
Good for you.
Think of you at class night. All good stuff.
All right. Other, other matters? Debbie? Steve? Katie?
One more. We have commencement over at the Southeastern Regional Vocate School with some pretty proud families, students, and people who love the children they take care of that are graduating. So that is, and I'm looking here, because as you hear, there's so many dates flowing through our heads right now, it's, it's hard to keep. But Wednesday night is the formal high school graduation at 6:00 PM.
Is Wednesday, coming Wednesday?
Yes, yeah. And then the night previous, Tuesday, tomorrow night, is the Technical Institute there that has their graduation. So one's at 6:30, the Technical on Tuesday night. And then on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM is the high school graduation. So I just want to wish good luck to all our.
That's great.
Sons and daughters of Foxborough over there at Southeastern Vocate and their families.
Steve, how many students are there from Foxborough that are graduating?
Seventeen now.
Yeah?
And next year, there'll be more.
That's great.
We're very happy.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have just one quick question for Mr. Yuckna, because I don't want him to go a meeting without having to say something.
Darn.
You were that close, Bill. Speaking of the Sam Burns Community Field, is graduation taking place on the field or next to the field?
Next to the field.
Very good.
Yeah, on the grass area.
Yeah, I've been worried about that. Okay.
It's going to be exactly where it always has been, facing the same way. So you're looking toward the back, the trees toward the back.
Yeah, excellent. I just worried about the where on the field.
Should be fine.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
All right.
He didn't actually make them talk.
No, I tried. All set?
I make a motion that we adjourn our meeting.
Excellent motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.